All right, call to order. I hereby announce pursuant to Section 5 of the Oakland Public Meetings Act that adequate notice of this meeting has been transmitted on January 16th, 2025 by the Board Administrative Officer to the Asbury Park Press, the Two River Times, the Township Clerk, and has been posted in the meetings, meeting room and in the entrance hall in Town Hall, all pursuant to Section 13 of the Oakland Public Meetings Act. Roll call.
Mr. Connolly.
Here.
And Mr. Ackerson.
Here.
Mr. Romano, absent. Mr. Fagan, absent. Mr. Mann.
Here.
Mr. Emma.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Plausas, absent. Mr. Silberman.
Here.
And Mr. Dorse, absent. And Mr. Bell.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence for the military, first responders, and police. First item on the agenda is, says resolution. What's, there's nothing in there?
Nothing, none.
All right, so next is the minutes. We have two minutes to go over. The first one from 9:16, 2025. Do we have a, I guess, a motion to accept those minutes? Motion.
Second.
Eligible to Mr. Connolly.
Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Silberman.
Yes.
And Mr. Bell. We probably should sit Mr. Bell.
Yes.
So he can actually vote.
Okay.
So we'll sit him instead of Ms. Plausas.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bell, if you come up, please.
Round one. Round one, that's not. Next, we have the minutes from 9:30, 2025. Motion to accept those minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Eligible to vote, Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Mr. Silberman.
Yes.
And Mr. Mann.
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes for September 16th and September 30th, 2025 were successfully approved.
Okay, thank you. The first item, do I have to read them whole thing or just say it's pushed? All right. PB number 2025-G, 23 Main Street Urban Renewal LLC, the applicant, has applied to the board for the property located at 23 Main Street, Homedale, New Jersey, Block 13, Lot 15, which is the former Vonnage headquarters, the property, and which is owned by 23 Main Street Propco LLC, an affiliate of the applicant, for preliminary and final major subdivision, preliminary major site plan, and final major site plan for Phase One, known as Azura at Homedale. This application is carried for scheduling purposes only and will be heard on November 10th, 2025 without further notice.
Motion and second, please.
Second.
I'm sorry, who motioned? Mr. Bell.
TJ.
TJ. Marty, I would do roll call since it's a special meeting. Mr. Connolly.
Yes.
Mr. Ackerson.
Yes.
Mr. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Silberman.
Yes.
And Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is PB 2025-F, Amendment of Site Plan with Bulk Variances, St. Benedict Catholic Church, 165 Bethany Road, Homedale, New Jersey, 07733, Block 30.09, Lot 6.01. More specifically, the plan proposes a two-story addition consisting of approximately 8,600 square feet on the first floor and 6,185 square feet on the second floor. The improvements will add four new classrooms and/or communal space, which would permit an increase of approximately 30 students and three full-time staff members, including classroom teachers and support personnel. At this time, we have counsel for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Salter, Alfieri, Cleary, Giacobi, Alferi, and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant. As the Board Chairman indicated, this is amended preliminary and final site plan approved for addition to the, to the school portion of the church school complex. We have three witnesses tonight. We have a representative from the school. We have our civil engineer, and then our secretary. We're going to do it in that order if you will allow us.
Sure. Just to confirm notices in order and escrows.
That's correct.
And just ask if anyone has a conflict with the applicant or vice versa.
Yes, I'm a person. I'm a St. Benedict.
We already knew that you're going to step down for the evening, right? Enjoy.
Just for the record, 7:20 PM, Mr. Mann stepped down since there was a conflict with the application. Thank you. Thank you.
Do they get sworn in now or?
Yep.
Okay.
We can do it. So we'll swear in, who, your first is the engineer?
No.
I'm sorry.
The representative of the school.
Okay, so swear her in as well, with our professionals as well for the hearing. If everyone raised your right hand, has everyone swore to tell the whole truth about the truth, help you got with regard to this application?
Yes, they do.
For the record, your witness has been sworn in as well as our professionals.
Okay, thank you. And this is, this is Megan Gallagher. Megan, can you tell the board what your affiliation is with the school?
Sure. My name's Megan Gallagher. I'm the Vice Principal of St. Benedict School. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening to present our plans for the expansion of St. Benedict School. We're deeply grateful for your time and your consideration. Our proposed expansion has been thoughtfully designed to ensure that it will have no negative impact on the surrounding community, no changes to traffic flow, not, no changes to the neighborhood character or our local environment. The true impact of this project will be felt within our school and our parish community. Where the added space will provide our students and staff with greater opportunities for growth, learning, and collaboration. As someone who has been blessed to experience St. Benedict School from many perspectives, a student myself, class 94, a child of a teacher, a parent of two students, John, class of 24, Matt, class 26, a pre-K teacher, pre-K teacher for six years, and now administrator, it's truly inspiring to witness how our school continues to grow and serve so many students and families. The expansion represents not just a building project, but a continuation of our mission to nurture faith, learning, and community for generations to come, providing students with a foundation for life. So thank you for your time, and please consider this expansion.
So I have a few follow-up questions for you.
Sure.
Okay, first of all, in the engineer's report, there's a reference to.
You have to hold up unless you need to.
Yeah, okay. I'll read. It's probably easier.
Okay.
You use that?
You got it. Perfect.
So in the engineer's report, there's a comment about basketball courts. Can you tell the board what has been done to address that? Explain the comment and what has been done to address that comment.
Sure. There was concern about basketball hoops that were in the way of, of the service road or in the expansion, but those have already been removed and we've already put up new ones further down. So they're no longer there. And if there is one there, it's a movable one, the kids like to dunk, so I don't want them dunking on the new one, so they have the little ones there, so, but those can be moved at any point.
And can you describe the drop-off and pickup process currently and then how, if at all, it's going to change if this were approved and constructed?
Perfect, okay. Our drop-off procedure, they come in off of Hillcrest into the drive that becomes a chute, and they come down in front of the, front of the school and they hop out that way. That is just for drop-off. We don't have a pickup procedure that works that way. Pickup is every parent comes in and parks if they're picking up, and then the students get dismissed and go out that way. Our buses, we have 13 buses currently this year, depends on our district yearly how many buses we'll get, and they come in through the Bethany Road entrance and they go into the back of the school building and they do their drop-off there. Pickup and drop-off will not change at all if we do this expansion. It will remain completely the same. There's really only the one main entrance for people coming in the building. Our buses just come in the back entrance, and that's the same for dismissal. Exit out the front and then out the back.
How is refuse handled today in terms of, is there a dumpster area? How frequently it's picked up, et cetera? And then how will that change if this were approved and constructed?
Yep, we currently have two dumpsters. They get picked up between 3:00 AM and 4:00 AM, so it doesn't have any, it's never there when the students are there. They come in off of Bethany, come through the back of the, behind the church, and they're able to pick up the garbage and make their turn and leave. I've never seen a dumpster, I've never seen a garbage truck there, but there's never any garbage there. So I know that it all happens when there's no students or staff at the building.
And then in terms of security at the school, how is that handled?
We have a full-time police officer, which is amazing. Thank you, Homedale, for that. We also have 52 cameras. We have, you know, swipe entries for everything. We also are continually applying for more grant money so that we can get more security put in place. So it's, you know, it's only going to improve. There's not going to be any changes to that as of right now, only if we get grant more money to put in more cameras.
But in terms of students entering and exiting the building, they're going to still do it exactly the way they're doing it today?
Correct. That will not change at all.
So apparent if they wanted to come into the building would have to go through the main door.
Yep.
Where there's security.
Yep, there's a buzz, and then it's, yep, it's a window where you get checked in, the vestibule is locked, and our security officer is there as well.
And then one final question, then the board, or public may have other questions. In terms of parking, is there adequate parking on the property now to accommodate all your, all your employees, et cetera, visitors?
Yes, there's plenty of parking. The only time you'll see it is Christmas Day when we have church and, you know, everyone shows up for church on Christmas, but during the school day, there's plenty of parking available, and we never have an issue with that.
And if this were approved and constructed, that would not be impacted either?
No, not at all.
And then you did, when we spoke, you talked about special events, you did have an agreement with.
Yes, we have great relationship with St. John Vianney, which is located behind us, and we have an agreement with them that they can use our overflow parking, and we've had a conversation with them about using them for overflow parking. You might have seen these past couple of weeks then when they've had the football games, there's a sign that Homedale Police has put up that says overflow parking here, and they're allowed to come in that way, especially the visitors. Their buses can park there, and they can come in through the back entrance into St. John Vianney from there. So our community has always been great with us about, you know, any of those issues, and we haven't had a parking issue otherwise, so.
That's all we have of Megan, Mr. Chair. Any one of our planning board engineers have any comments or questions for this witness?
Yeah, just one question, can you, oh yeah, sorry. Can, can you describe again what the, the bus drop-off is and describe like where, at the building that is?
Sure. So they come in off of Bethany, that's our main entrance there, and they turn quickly to go behind the building, and they do their drop-off, and they circle back around and go right back out. There's enough of a turning radius for them to come around and go back out. At the end of the day, we have 13 buses line up, and the kids exit, and they all go into the buses, and then one at a time, all the buses leave at the same time. So no one comes into the main entrance of the school building during the school day. Everyone has to come through the back entrance at that point. We do have a nine o'clock mass that happens. All of the buses are gone by that point or have not arrived, you know, for the end of the day, and that are handicap entrance back there that are nine o'clockers used, nine o'clockers, the people that go to nine o'clock mass. They're, they have access to that and go into the church at that point, and then they leave, and then it'll get blocked off again because we have recess out there as well.
And so, and so that's not on the Loop Road, right?
Nope.
That's a separate, the Loop Road goes clockwise around?
All the way around.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Buses don't go around the building at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any, but would there be any changes to drop-off with the building addition for events? I know that there's like an auditorium space, or would people still come through the main entrance for events?
No, for safety reasons, we like to keep one entrance for everyone. Everyone must check in. We use a ticketing QR system so that people all come through the main entrance and they have to be scanned in to come in. And this real expansion is really for us to have space to spread out. We currently have a cafeteria that doubles as a gym, that doubles as an auditorium that we use, so we're looking to expand so that we can have more space for our kids.
And is the, the western parking lot behind the building, is that used for any particular purpose, like, like teacher parking or?
No, all of our teachers park in the front of the building, primarily in the first two rows, you know, located closer to our priest's house over that way, so.
So is that rear parking lot mostly overflow?
Empty. It's, I mean, it's never used during the day.
Right.
Except for the nine o'clockers, just because they have that handicap entrance. Other than that, it's empty because we do have recess that happens on playgrounds beyond it, so we'd like to keep that empty so that people aren't, you know, parking there and we don't have to worry about cars in that situation.
So with the reconstructed parking lot area that's being proposed, that essentially, the plan for that is what, just to remain mostly empty?
Yes, I mean, we're, the plan calls for removing, I want to say, nine spots total, but it's not going to affect, you know, the flow of traffic or the way the kids play or, you know, any of our personnel.
Okay, and there's some new walkways and landscaping that's being added. Is that generally not expected to be used on a frequent basis? There's like a southern walkway, I believe.
Are you talking behind the school building or?
There's a, I'm sorry, between, there are three buildings that are in a row.
Yeah, the wings, yeah.
Yes, the three wings, and between the western wing and the central wing, a walkway is proposed to connect to the Loop Road.
Right.
Is that proposed to be used for any particular function?
Um, no, I mean, we have a large campus and we like to use it, and we love our green space, we have a great outdoor learning center, so we do encourage our students to go out there, so just, you know, a walkway for our students to be able to get to the great outdoor learning center. And because we are planning on building, we wanted to give that green space, so that's why that area in between then, you know, will have more space for our environment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone on the, on the board have any questions to this witness? All right, just to let everyone know, the public, what I'm going to do is we'll let every one of their witnesses testify first, and then we'll have questions and comments at the end, and you can direct them to whoever you want individually, so. We're just going to swear you in when you get a second, so.
Of course. Back it up a little bit, maybe, if you want to see that. Guys, we apologize for the technology. Sorry. Everyone, have you sworn in and qualified?
If you want to tell the whole truth about the truth, help you got.
Yes.
Can I just spell your name for the record?
Doug D.O.U.G., last name Wolf, W.O.L.F. We'll use this.
And Doug, would, would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Yeah, sure. Doug Wolf from Bowler Engineering located at 30 Independence Boulevard in Warren, New Jersey, 07059. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a professional licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm good standing, and I've testified before multiple boards in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, no objection. Just, you can proceed, right?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me good on this?
Yep.
That comes out too. If you want to hold, that comes out.
Yeah, I like to direct a little bit, so I'll try that. If you need me to speak up, let me know.
And Doug, the exhibit you're about to refer to, can we identify that, please?
Yes, so this is Ariel exhibit, we can mark this A1.
Yeah, all exhibits will be marked.
Do you want me to do it? This is Ariel exhibit again, marked A1, prepared by Bowler, dated 10/21/2025. Property in question is at 165 Bethany Road, Township of Homedale, New Jersey, Monmouth County. It is Block 30.09, Lot 6.01. As shown here, the property in question is outlined in yellow and is approximately 21.7 acres. In terms of zoning, it is owned residence in agricultural district, excuse me, that's R40-B, and use is private school and is permitted use in this case. Now, in terms of surrounding uses, first let's orient ourselves here, north is to the top of the page. Starting with the north, we have Bethany Road bordering the site, residential beyond also has a township in this area. Moving over to the east, we have Hillcrest Road bordering the site, with some residential beyond and eventually Garden State Parkway. To the south, we have residential below, and then to the west, we have the St. John Vianney High School, with a football field and track here that you can see, with residential beyond and also averaging township in this area as well. Next here, we're going to move to my next exhibit, which is the overall site plan rendering. I'm going to mark this A2. This is just a colorized version of what was submitted to copy of the subplan, but visually enhanced. All right, so this is the overall site plan. Area in question that we're focusing on is this bottom left-hand corner or southwest portion of the site. It's a two-phase improvement. Phase One is this small portion right here. Phase Two is the larger portion over here. So with that two-phase building addition, we're also proposing ancillary parking, sidewalks, stormwater utility, and landscaping and lighting improvements, starting with Phase One. As mentioned before, it's a 1,700 square foot, one-story building addition consisting of a classroom and a music classroom. The only other improvements associated with this Phase One are the conversion of impervious area, actually a significant amount of impervious area here, to green space. We're adding a sidewalk. We're also proposing some trees, some lighting, and some stormwater improvements in that area. Demolition for Phase One will be limited to a small wood shed and asphalt areas in this portion. Moving on to Phase Two, that's the two-story building in this area here. That's going to be a 13,000 square foot across two floors. First floor is approximately 6,900 square feet and consists of two classrooms, multipurpose rooms, small office and ancillary spaces, including a fire, music, and storage rooms. There's also an elevator and two sets of stairs that are proposed, which our architects will get into further detail later. Second story, we've got approximately 6,000 square feet consisting of a classroom, multipurpose room, and storage. And demolition for this phase of the project will be limited to a one-story masonry building, approximately 710 square feet in this area, as well as some other minor ancillary removals. Moving on to circulation, Megan hit on it a little bit, but I just want to reiterate to everyone exactly how the site operates now and that it's not going to change after these improvements. So starting with passenger cars, so let's start with access first off. There's a few access points on the site. There's one off of Bethany Road right here. This is an ingress and egress. There's an ingress off of Hillcrest Road here. This is where passenger cars come in, and there's an egress only. This is a left lane and a right lane for exit point only there. So starting with passenger cars, passenger cars are going to pull in off Hillcrest Road, they're going to come into the site, and they're going to make a left here, assuming they're going to do drop-off, they're going to drop their kids off, they're then going to make a left and exit back on Hillcrest Road in this location. Megan mentioned earlier that if they are doing pickups, excuse me, they will park in this lot here and wait for the children to come out, and they'll exit the site same as they would if they're doing drop-off. In terms of buses, buses are going to come in off Bethany Road, they're going to come down here, they're going to turn right as they do now, they're going to make a U in this parking lot location that is empty at all times, like Megan testified to. They're going to park here, and they're going to load their kids, and then they're going to unload and exit the same way that they came in. That operationally is proposed to remain the same, there's no changes there. Let's see, regarding fire circulation, so we've received some comments from the fire official. I was on the phone with him earlier today to talk through a couple of those. We're confident we'll be able to resolve any issues he has. Two things he brought up, he wants to see an additional fire hydrant in this location. We are okay with proposing that. There is one existing fire hydrant located back here. And the second thing he requested was he wants to see a circulation plan of the fire truck here, which I sent him. However, he also requested that we widen a portion. First, he asked for the entirety of this to be widened to 25 feet. However, after further discussions, we narrowed it down to 20 feet and only for a portion of this area to be widened there. And the truck, as I sent to him, it adequately circulates, there's no issues there from a width standpoint. Trash pickup, she already hit on, or excuse me, Megan already hit on, but we will be in Phase Two proposing a new dumpster in this location here that the trash will come and pick up, as it does now. Moving on to parking, so the site is currently overparked at 293 spaces in the existing condition. Operationally, St. Ben's, as I said before, rarely ever sees this lot at capacity, maybe on Christmas Day when everyone's renting the church. We're proposing to reduce 16 spaces in total, so that brings our proposed count across the entirety of the site to 277 spaces, and that reduction is only in the overflow area adjacent to these phase two improvements here. Regarding parking sizes, all new proposed spaces are compliant 9 feet by 18 feet, with a few existing spaces slightly below this requirement. There's a few on-site that are 17.2 feet wide instead of 18. These spaces are proposed to remain in, in this existing non-conformity. Regarding ADA, we have 21 existing ADA spaces on the site. We have 13 along this portion here, and then there's another, s, eight over here in front of the site, and only seven are required for NJ ADA requirements. The 13 ADA spaces adjacent to these improvements here will be analyzed for compliance and restrike as necessary. We received some comments from the traffic engineer, having us take another look at that. Some of the spaces are slightly less wide in terms of striking for, for van-accessible vehicles, so we're going to take a look at that. If needed, we'll propose the width required for vans. It may result in a reduction, may result in a reduction of one ADA space. However, like I said before, we're at 21 spaces where only seven are required. Next, I'm going to move to my next exhibit.
Before you move off parking, there's a comment about EV spaces, but we're exempt from that because we're not adding the required number. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the way the ordinance reads, the DC model-wide ordinance is if you're proposing less than 25 new spaces, you aren't required to propose to make ready EV, so that's, that's how we're approaching this. Okay. They are not proposing EV spaces on the pro, this project. All right, so I'm going to move on to my next exhibit here. This is also submitted as part of the township submission. I'll mark this A3. This is also a site plan rendering. All it is is zooming version, we are looking up to four. So again, this is the area in question, southwest portion of the site. Right here is Phase One building. These are the Phase One improvements associated with the Phase One building, and then everything over here is really Phase Two. Sticking with parking for a little parking setback from building, there's an existing non-conforming condition of 17.9 feet right here, where 20 feet is required for the ordinance. We are requesting a variance for a six-foot parking to building setback where 20 feet is required, and that's in this area here for four stalls, and the reason for that is we're just looking to maximize parking. Minimum aisle width, there's an existing non-conforming condition for a two-way aisle width of 23.7 feet, that's over here, where 25 feet is required. In this area before, it was all two-way along here and here. We're flipping that to just a one-way to essentially model how the buses come in and park. This drive aisle was two-way, it's now going to one-way and is 23.2 feet wide, and we're requesting a variance for that as well, where 25 feet is required. I heard you talk about EV. In terms of loading, we agree to provide one compliant loading space. We're going to propose that in this area over here for vehicles that are going to be dropping anything off. They can access through the sidewalk, and there is a overhead door here and in this location as well that will likely be bringing anything to that's going to be dropped off.
You mean like deliveries?
Deliveries, yes.
Yes.
Exactly. In terms of area yard and bulk requirements, going to run through this pretty quickly because a lot is unchanged. Minimum lot area is 21.68 and is to remain unchanged. Minimum lot depth is 1,077.4, it's to remain unchanged. Minimum lot frontage is 425.8 and is to remain unchanged. Minimum lot width is 1,307.3 and is to remain unchanged. Minimum front yard setback, we have an existing non-conforming condition of 58.6 where 100 feet is required and is to remain unchanged. Minimum side yard setback of 539.7 is to remain unchanged. And minimum rear yard setback, we have an existing non-conforming condition of eighty-three point six, that's in this lower portion here, where it lets the property line. And this is also to remain unchanged. In terms of max building height, we are proposing a compliant building height of twenty-nine point nine six where thirty feet is permitted. In terms of max coverage by primary structures, driveways and accessory uses, this number has been revised in what was submitted previously after discussions with township engineer to remove sidewalk in this calculation, so the new and accurate calculation for this in the existing condition is thirty-one point five percent. That equates to two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-four square feet, that is an existing non-conforming condition. So just to recap right here, we're talking about coverage by structures, driveways and accessory uses. So right now, there's an existing non-conforming condition for block coverage. We are reducing that thirty-one point five percent down to thirty point two percent in the proposed condition. And we are requesting a variance for that as it is still above the required amount. And we're reducing this coverage by approximately one point three percent or roughly thirteen thousand square feet. And providing substantial green space and plantings primarily in this area here, which is completely asphalt, or is completely asphalt as it stands. Also in this area here, it's completely asphalt as well, and we're also proposing a landscape aisle there. Moving on to drainage and stormwater, we are not a major development per NJDEP criteria, our proposed disturbance is less than an acre at point seven-two acres. We are decreasing again the total impervious by approximately thirteen thousand square feet. And we're also reducing motor vehicle surface area with the addition of this building here and removal of other various parking and asphalt areas. In terms of stormwater conveyance, we're going to be proposing roof drains and inlets, after further discussion with the engineer as well, we agree that we'll propose another inlet or two, maybe three in this area. We're going to tie in some roof drains, we're going to clean this up, make it look real nice and make sure that there's no ponding or anything located here as the grades in the existing condition are fairly shallow and when you propose landscaping, you like to improve those conditions a little bit in terms of slope. Okay, further on with drainage, we'll be tying into a drainage system south of the site, there's a large pipe that runs along the southern portion of the site, we're going to tie into that. That eventually discharges into a tributary of the Raritan River north and travels into the bay. And existing drainage patterns are to remain. And in terms of utilities, electric service is to remain, water service is to remain, gas service line is to remain, and sanitary sewer service line is to remain. The sewer runs through here, will be cut and capped, and the contractor will either run it through the slot or he'll tie in a new location at this point. We have sent plans, we have to submit to the DEP for a TWA, which is a sewer permit due to a s- a small flow increase from the increase in students. We've already submitted that and gained approval from Holmdale Township, next it needs to go to BRSI. However, they will not renew, they will not review the application, excuse me, until we gain planning approval, so that's being held up right now. But after that, we'll go to DEP and gain the necessary approvals for any utilities. Moving on to lighting, there are two proposed area lights noted here and here, these are proposed at twelve feet high. They're proposed at three thousand K color temperature and are dark sky compliant. We're also proposing eight building-mounted lights, which are mounted at nine feet in various areas around the exterior of the building here and here. These are at nine feet again, proposed at three thousand K color temperature, and they match the existing wall-mounted lights as best as possible. Regarding layer over the property line, there's no change in excess light spillage across the western property line here due to those lighting improvements. There's also no change in excess lighting spillage along the southern property line due to these lighting improvements. But please note these, this analysis is limited to the proposed lighting only in these areas, it's a limited lighting analysis. And additionally, these two buildings here and here will provide a natural screening for any additional lights in this area. Nothing will be past these points, and there's a pretty thick landscape bunker in the existing condition along the southern portion of the site. We are requesting a few waivers for lighting, starting with a waiver for a two-point-six-five foot candle, average illumination at the ground level, where zero-point-five to one foot candles are fired. This is just due to a little bit of excess lighting, you know, we, it's a school and a church, we like to propose a little more lighting than, except we use here. We're also requesting a waiver for four-point-three-three to one maximum, average to minimum uniformity ratio where four to one is required, so just slightly above that requirement. And also requesting a waiver for ten-point-four-three to one maximum to minimum uniformity ratio where ten to one is required. And the uniformity ratio, just to make everyone aware, it's, it's really the intensity of light measured at a certain location, so in this room, because there's so many lights and they're spaced out equally, there's a pretty uniform ratio. But in this case, it, the light levels dip in certain locations, but they come up in, in other locations, like directly underneath the lighting in that case. Moving on to landscaping here, again, we are reducing impervious coverage across the site significantly. The existing site is sixty-five point three percent landscaping slash open space, and the proposed condition is sixty-six point seven percent landscaping and open space. So this is a twenty-something acre site, a one percent increase is, is significant in this case. Right now, there are little to no existing plantings across the area of improvements, we're talking right here, pretty much right now it's asphalt and buildings. We are looking to improve upon this, we're proposing five sugar maple trees of two-and-a-half inch caliber, one, two, three, four, and the fifth one is going to be in this landscaping island that we're proposing up in this corner. We are requesting a variance for the number of trees per parking space, where thirty-five trees are required, there's zero existing on the site right now just because there aren't any landscape islands across the rest of the site. However, the area that we are working in, we are proposing a landscaping island and we are proposing a tree in that area. However, we're still requesting a variance for that. We're also requesting variances for a woodland retention and preservation plan and conservation easement, which the board previously granted in the prior twenty-thirteen application. No tree removal is proposed as part of this application and there's no change in, there's no change proposed to these existing non-problems. We're also proposing fifteen shrub varieties across the site, primarily here, here and here. These shrub varieties range from sea green juniper and/or juniper and hydrangea. So we're putting some nice plantings here, along the edges of the building, everything will look very nice. Lastly here, ancillary approvals, so Freehold Soil Conservation District, we've been working with them, our comments have, we've addressed their comments, we're just awaiting approval. We have an email from them confirming that this is the case dated ten-seventeen. County, we've resubmitted further comments, we have a DRC meeting scheduled for this coming Monday, the twenty-seventh, to hopefully close that out as well. TWA, I talked about a little bit in terms of the sewer, we went through Holmdale, we got approval through, through Holmdale, next needs to go to BRSI and then DEP. And lastly, fire, I spoke with fire official, we're working with their office to address any final comments. To summarize, St. Ben's Catholic School and Church, we're excited to improve upon a portion of the property. This application, if approved, will provide a nice refresh to this portion of the property, some increased landscaping, plantings and lighting improvements. And we have reviewed the professionals' letters and agreed to work with them to satisfy the comments other than what was outlined previously in testimony.
I, I just have one follow-up question, in the planner's report, on page five, number two, there's a question about site improvements and the phasing and the recommendation that the completion of all site improvements occur as part of phase one, is that acceptable?
No, so phase one, the only improvements that we are proposing to be phase one is this building and the immediately adjacent improvements in this area. So that would be sidewalk, that'd be landscaping, that would be these trees, lighting improvements, and then any utility improvements required as well as stormwater. Like I said, roof drains and inlets are also going to be proposed in this area to promote positive drainage.
Is there a phase one plan that reflects that, or would we, so we would submit one as a condition of approval so that the board professionals see exactly what the phase one improvements are? We can do that?
We can do that.
If they want, okay. That's all we have of the engineering, Mr. Chair.
And your, your last witness is what?
Architect.
Okay, so I'll hand it over to our professionals.
Thanks Doug for your testimony, I have a few questions. One is related to circulation, and again, just so I'm clear, the, so the, the bus circulation is occurring in that back lot, is that correct? Using that one-way circulation, okay. Are you planning to provide, yeah, yeah, actually, that, that's helpful too, yeah, I can, I can see how, how it would, the bus comes off of Bethany, loops around the back and then, and then proceeds out of the area. Are you planning to provide circulation plans, like showing turning and, and looping, you know, with your resubmission?
Yes.
Can you do that? Okay. Yeah, because I, I want to look at, you know, I, I know we talked today about the, you know, trav- the, the aisle width and, and all of that and, you know, just wanting to see, you know, I know that the, the bus, you know, the time of day, you know, the time that the bus is going to be coming in and, and leaving is, you know, a brief time, but we just want to make sure that it's safe for, for all drivers and for, for students of course as well. So, okay, so the circulation plans, regarding the, the EV space, you know, the, the ordinance requirement, the way that we read it, it, it did appear that a make-ready space is required whenever you have a parking lot of, you know, one space for a new lot of fifty or fewer spaces. Is there different, you know, something different, because that's what the ordinance, that's how we read the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I just know the statute is the other way. That if you, it's for the new spaces, if you exceed the number, then you're supposed to comply with them. But we'll work with you on, I mean, the difficulty with, there's, first of all, there's no need for it there because it's not like a retail center where you have people shopping or gas stations, but we'll, if, if the ordinance provides for it, I'd have to look at the ordinance, I think the statute clearly exempts us. So unless the ordinance is different, which is unusual.
I believe the ordinance might be, is, is different, so, yeah, we can, we can work together to resolve that, that comment. And then, you know, regarding the phasing, I think, you know, we would be interested in seeing that, that phase one plan and what, what happens, you know, as, as far as that, the use of that parking lot during, you know, what, after, I mean, maybe during construction and then also, you know, when you're kind of in that interim period, has thought been given to that? So the parking lot improvements would be part of phase two, you said, correct?
Yes, that's correct, I think we would have to, in terms of construction, make sure that vehicles, any construction vehicles are not staging in this area, there's no equipment there. We, we need to make sure that there's a plan of place put together where that is either located away from there or only in this, this area in the phase one portion. Yes, we, we can work with your office to put together a plan for that as well.
Okay, yeah, we, we just want to make sure that, you know, that, that use of that, that back lot, I, I can see how that could be a bit challenging, you know, to try, you know, considering the school year and the different uses at different times of year, just to make sure that, that area remains safe for, for all users. And I, I know you mentioned some of the, the concerns with ADA, you know, the, the striping and also, you know, there are a couple of spaces, I think, that are shown on the plan beyond the stop bar that are kind of, you know, potentially encroaching on that, that loop road. So that's something else that we'd want to take a closer look at, yeah, yeah, in that, in that area, yeah, yeah, we do have some concern about that, so we, we'd want to look at that with you as well.
Yeah, we could take a look at that, like I said, we're well overparked on ADA spaces, so if we feel the need for these to be, you know, relocated, removed, we can do more with that.
Okay, great, and then the one other question, was there any consideration given to providing more trees in that, that new landscaped area? I, I don't know if there were other uses, you know, if.
No, I mean, I, I defer to, I think, St. Ben's team on what activities they think are going to be happening there. If it's, you know, if it's really a play area, you wouldn't want to put too many trees, but if it's, if it's not, then we could, we could look at proposing another two trees in that area.
Okay. And I, I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Hi, good evening, so since you don't have a planner coming on, would I ask my planning support questions to this witness?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so you talked about the variances, I'm not sure you mentioned what the requirement is for the coverage, just as a reference for the board. You had mentioned what's being proposed.
Yeah, it's fifteen though.
It is fifteen, yes.
Yeah, okay, just, sure, sure, just for the record. And, you know, typically we would want to see some discussion of what the variance proofs you're referencing, is it a C-one variance, a C-two variance? Had you given that thought?
Yeah, so we, we discussed that, this, in terms of all the existing conditions, because primarily all these variances are existing conditions, so that we think is C-one because otherwise we have to redo the entire project for a small addition. And then the others are C-two because there's no impact and it's the flexible C, so there, there's no impact, negative impact to the community, the plan and the benefits outweigh the detriments. But yet, so we think primarily, there's very few new variances that are associated with the, with the proposal.
And would you say that purposes of zoning are advanced by the variances since you're seeking C-two?
Yes.
Would one of those purposes be promoting public health, safety, morals and general welfare and maybe another being?
Because of the school and the church, yes.
And another maybe being securing safety from fire and flood because you're adding new?
Right, that's true, and we only need to meet the one, but yes, that would, that would qualify as well, but the first one I think is the primary one.
Yeah, okay, and.
So I'll just ask your witness to confirm what you said.
Could you confirm, yes?
At the end, we'll ask him to agree.
Thank you, and, and since this use is permitted in the zone, but it is also a, a school and a part of a house of worship use, are those typically considered to be inherently beneficial uses?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and they are permitted in the zone. In terms of my other questions, you had said that there are thirty-five trees being in total on the site in the proposal?
That is, that's the requirement for parking lot trees, I believe.
It was a little unclear to me what was being proposed, I, I think the requirement was thirty-five trees, but I wasn't too sure the number.
Let me, let me reiterate that, so required trees for trees within parking areas, we're talking landscape island trees, is one tree per eight spaces, which comes out to thirty-five trees, with two-hundred-and-seventy-seven spaces proposed. Across the site, if you look in this large parking lot here, there are no landscape islands in the existing conditions, so that is why there is such an existing non-conformity with this. However, where we are doing work and proposing this work, we are proposing a single landscape island, proposing one tree in that area. So for this requirement specifically, we are only proposing one landscape island tree.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I also wanted to ask, based on my visit of the site, some of the directional arrows along that loop road were a bit faded, a bit contradictory, it looked like different directions were put right on top of one another, would there be any consideration to restriping?
Yes, there would, we in fact did look at that in a portion of the southern, portion of the southern site here, we did remove, on the site plan, we're proposing to remove some of those directional arrows and propose a new solid directional arrow to clean that up a little bit. If you feel further directional arrows are needed, we can definitely work with your office and get that done.
No, that, that's, that's basically what I was trying to get at. And I think that you had addressed my comments related to phasing, that the southern improvements will be part of phase one and everything north of the building addition, including the dumpster area will be phase two. As far as like the dumpster pickup, you had talked about providing turning templates to make sure that that works in that space, given the drive aisle width and the solar panels, right? And you believe that it would work in that area?
Yes, it does, we haven't submitted it to your office, yeah, I believe we can provide that.
Okay. In terms of my other comments, I believe that you might have addressed everything, I was just going to comment on the, the electric vehicle ordinance. So the exemption that you're referring to is for retailers that provide twenty-five or fewer off-street parking spaces or single-family home developments, would you consider this to be a retailer?
No.
So I think that that exemption probably doesn't apply and what the engineer was referring to, that new parking fields of, with under fifty spaces require one EV make-ready space, I think that's my interpretation of the ordinance.
We'll, we'll review it, if that's the case, then we'll have to provide it.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you, that's, those are my comments.
Okay.
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, just in terms of the variances, I just want to state it more explicitly in terms of the negative criteria. You talked about not having detriments to the neighborhood, the previous witness al- also touched on that a bit. She touched on traffic, she touched on the local environment and the neighborhood character. Do you think that there would be any substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance or the master plan, you had mentioned the zone?
I, I do not have that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone have any questions on the board? I saw one. I saw one of the things, I forget who, I think it was you, Lauren, maybe you asked her. Yeah, is the, the existing parking lot's being repaved?
Only a portion.
Just where it's affected by the new construction, not the.
Yeah, so this, this area right here is proposed to be repaved. Excuse me, we're not proposing any additional improvements. This, this actually is in pretty good condition right now.
And I just want to understand, there's two hundred and ninety-three spaces now. And, but you're going to reduce the number by sixteen?
Sixteen down to two seventy-seven.
All right, how many are required by code?
There is no code requirement for school and church that we could find in the Homestead Township ordinance. And I don't believe the engineering lawyer had a requirement listed either for schools.
For schools, there's no requirement. For houses of worship, the requirement is three spaces.
Three per?
Three spaces.
Three spaces? Just three total spaces?
Yes.
That's why we didn't list it because we felt like it didn't apply to this.
Oh, all right. Yeah, I was just wondering, like, if tree, I know, I know Homestead's big on trees now. I mean, we should be, right? But I don't know whether it's something to be considered about, you know, taking a couple of space and maybe putting islands in and putting more trees and more greenery. Just something to consider. One thing is the lighting. I just know the lighting, you said, is point five to one. That's a minimum, right? That's not a maximum.
Correct.
So you don't need a variance if you're providing more.
Sorry, that, let me re-speak there. That is a.
Usually, one-foot candles minimum.
Point five is the minimum and one is the maximum. So that's the range they want you to follow with it for that requirement.
Oh, it does say one max? That seems, that doesn't seem correct to me, but. Is that true? One foot min, maximum? I'm pretty sure the code always says one foot minimum at the circuit.
I know there are maximum level requirements. I believe that does apply in this.
One's max?
Yeah, so they, they list it as a range in the, in section thirty dash sixty-nine in lighting for zero point five to one foot candle. So because we are exceeding that, we're going to.
Oh. You're telling me that's the town rule, one foot, one foot candle max on parking, parking lots?
That's for average illumination and ground lighting.
And I think it comes up in every significant application.
That's, yeah, because I know the building code specifically says one ma, one min, not max, so.
Lighting's, lighting's a difficult one. Sometimes it's contradicting, especially the property lines, driveway entrances, things like that.
There's security issues out there and there's other issues, so, okay. And as far as all the other comments that pertain to you, that are made by the traffic, because I know the traffic people said something about more studies, right?
Yeah, they, they asked us to revise, by us, I mean, Dolan and Dean, who prepared the report, to revise the report. We didn't comply with that.
Okay, so you have no issue with any of the comments made by our professionals, right?
Other than what we outlined, no, I do not.
Okay. Gentlemen, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Architect, where are you?
I'm over here.
There you are. Just, you know, we're going to swear you in, though, before you start, so.
Rich, get sworn in.
You swear to tell the whole, the truth, not about the truths, I hope you got it.
I do.
Just spell your name for the record.
Sure, it's Richard Tokarski, spelled T-O-K-A-R-S-K-I.
And Rich, would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Sure, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and New York. I'm founding principal of Tokarski Millman Architects. We're experiencing, this is our twenty-fifth year. I'm a nineteen ninety-two graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology with a bachelor's of architecture. And I've appeared before planning and zoning boards throughout the state on numerous occasions.
Thank you. And, and Rich, while we're getting your exhibit up, I have two general questions for you. One is, the building additions that are being proposed, will they all be ADA compliant?
Yes, as per the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code, the Rehabilitation Subcode, and the IPC, they will be required to be handicap accessibility. In addition to that, we're also installing an elevator in this section of the building because it's a two-story section.
And there's a question about the elevator being of adequate size to handle EMS stretchers?
Yes, there was a comment about EMS stretchers. We weren't a hundred percent sure if it would be required in a school. We did speak with the school and they wanted enlarged elevator anyway for freight. So we will comply with the, you know, elevator that's sized large enough for an elevator stretcher.
Okay.
And we do have room to expand the elevator to accommodate that.
Okay, and then, now, those were just some details while they were putting up the plan we want to run through for the board. From an architectural perspective, what's proposed? And just mark each one, right?
Yep. A four will be the first floor plan. A five will be the second floor plan.
When you say first and second, what's that mean? Floors or phases?
Floors.
Okay.
And A six will be the exterior elevations. So on the first floor plan, I want to point out the Phase One addition, which consists of a classroom located here and also a music classroom here. So this comprises seventeen hundred square feet, which will be the Phase One. The Phase Two section will add two additional classrooms, a multipurpose room, stairs, an office, a storage area, a second storage area, and a sprinkler room in the corner. Will also include two egress stairs here and here, as well as an elevator to access the second floor. The Phase Two second floor plan consists of six thousand one hundred and eighty-five square feet, which has a classroom, again, stairs, an elevator coming up to provide an access corridor, and then there's a large multipurpose room with a stage, handicap-accessible lift, and then some storage in the back area. Exhibit A six is the exterior elevations. I'm going to start with detail number one, which is the northeast elevation. The blank space is the existing school. This shows the two-story addition. The addition is going to be comprised of brick to match the existing building in combination with stucco panels, which mimics what's on the existing building. So the architecture will blend into the existing campus architecture in terms of color and materials. Detail number two is the southwest elevation. This shows the clear version of the two-story section. Detail number three is the southeast elevation that shows the glimpse of the one-story building in between the two existing wings. And then detail number four is the northwest elevation, which, on the electronic version, maybe the one you have is also has a color. This print doesn't have it. Again, showing the brick and stucco for the exterior finishes.
That's all we have of the architect. That's it?
That's it. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
All right, professionals?
I do have one question. So the, it's the southern part of the Phase One, the two classrooms. You had said that the whole building was ADA accessible. There's one entrance that has steps that lead directly to the music classroom. Is that an accessible classroom?
The room is accessible from the interior, so they can enter through the one door. Because it's a music classroom, we're going to have tiered platforms. And then the secondary egress is off the, the upper portions, so that's a second means of egress to the exterior.
So it's more of a safety egress?
Yeah, safety and convenience out, to outside.
Not necessarily a primary?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that, that was my question that I had already asked to the operations witness about, you know, if the main entrance to the building would be from the front. She testified that it was. So the entrance that you're showing on the northern part of the Phase Two is really ancillary?
Secondary, yeah. Nobody would be entering through that, coming into the building.
On a typical basis?
Correct, it'll be a locked door that's, you know, egress only out.
Okay.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah, that's it. I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, anyone from the board? Nope? All right, so, thank you.
Thank you.
But at this time, we'll open up questions to the public, if anyone has any questions. Going once, okay. Questions closed. Anyone from the public have any comments to make? No? Okay, comments closed, that's simple. All right, so just so I understand, we are here to talk about certain variances that deal with parking offsets, right? The coverage issue, because you're do, while you're reducing existing, the existing coverage, you're still above the maximum permissible coverage.
That's correct.
Right, okay. There's some issues with the lighting, although I did look it up. It's ten max at any point, but that's all right. Trees, we talked about, that wasn't, was that an variance they were looking for also, trees? Yes, because the existing condition has no trees in the parking lot. And then we're providing only one in the new section. So there is variance relief associated with it. Okay, all right. And what was the thing about, in the woodlands? What was the thing about the woodlands again?
That was more a submission requirement.
Okay. Yeah, could, but we're not, there's no tree removal. Coverage, or did I forget one? That's a variance.
Yeah. There. Oh, did you, you can go.
There was also a variance for the one-way drive aisle width.
That's right.
Oh, one-way drive aisle. Just in case.
The one-way drive, drive aisle.
Yeah, variance for one-way drive aisle width equal to.
Twenty-four, we're twenty-five.
I thought you said it was two-way, then you're changing it to a one-way. Is that what?
Yes, but it's still non-conforming.
Okay.
Twenty-three point.
What's that?
Two, I believe.
Okay.
Where twenty-five is required, yes. I rounded it up.
So as far as our professionals go, do we have any issues with any of the requests they're making for variances on any of these issues?
I actually wanted to just follow up on one item. You had mentioned you would show a loading space. And I didn't quite see where you were pointing to on the diagram. My question is if where you're proposing a loading space would remove any of the parking spaces that you're currently proposing to reconstruct.
So where we were going to propose a loading space is over here in this area. It would not produce any further parking or impact any further parking. It would be off of this existing drive aisle in this, in this portion. We could add a small portion of asphalt there.
Okay.
Compliant, I think, it's ten feet wide by, I don't know, maybe C, C, D, whatever it is, we propose a compliant-sized loading space.
I mean, as far as the planning testimony goes, there was testimony that there would be no substantial detriments to the public good, which I think is important here in terms of the parking, the character, the, the stormwater improvements, they testified would be improving. And I think that that's important when you're talking about lot coverage. In terms of the setbacks between the building and the parking area, maybe you could just expound a little bit more on that?
Yes, so regarding the setbacks, we're really just looking to provide adequate parking if, if the board feels that, you know, we are overparked like I did state.
Can you point out the area that we're talking about?
Great here.
So the board members say?
Board, on the great here, we have a six-foot parking setback to build where twenty feet is, is required. There is already an existing non-conforming condition along this entire portion. We did propose seven spaces here just to, you know, provide adequate parking for the site. However, if we feel that we, we'd like to reduce parking further, we could pull this back, reduce four spaces and potentially add some green space here if everyone feel like that it's better approach.
You know, except for Christmas, what's the, what's the capacity that you're at at most? Is it seventy percent, sixty, fifty percent?
Not even.
Less.
Less than that.
Less.
Nobody drives to school, except for my staff.
Right.
So I don't have any student drivers. So it's, I mean, I.
She should come up.
Oh, yeah.
Sit here.
I have thirty-eight members on staff, so they drive. And if we have two hundred and seventy-seven spaces, I mean, if I have visitors throughout the day, something like that, but it's never exceeds, you know, we're adjusted pickup when parents come to pick up. But with thirteen buses, I put a lot of kids on buses every day, too. So we're never, at the end of the day, I would say we're at sixty percent fill when it's pickup time. But, I mean, never in the back. And, yeah, we never exceed.
Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, I guess we can move to the vote, right?
Yep.
I guess, does anyone want to make a motion to, I guess, to approve the application pending?
There's multiple conditions.
Multiple conditions pending.
To address and the rest of it.
Yeah, we just need your guidance on that last point, if you want to grant that variance relief or to eliminate those spaces. That's the board's call.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, wait, what was I saying? The, I mean, me personally, it doesn't really matter to me because it's really just affecting their property. I don't know if anyone else has a difference of opinion?
So the question is, there's seven spaces and you, we're, we're potentially reducing it to four plus a tree? Is that the issue?
That would, that would be the approach, yeah, if, if the board desires, yeah.
I don't know if one tree's going to make a difference.
Like, I, I just said, my thing is, like, I always like to try and help people out when we can, when there's variances, as long as there's a real hardship or a problem with complying. You know, I just know that if you have so many spaces and, you know, and you don't use them except for one day of the year, and you have the overflow ability at St. John's Fiene, you know, maybe there's some middle ground there. I mean, I'm fine with the lighting, obviously. I don't, I think, as long as it's not disturbing the neighbors, I think the more lighting, the better, in a parking lot particularly.
You're asking them to put one tree on a part of the property that they're not touching, really? The two hundred and seventy-seven spots.
No, I'm not asking them to put a one tree. I was just saying there's a relief for, they want a variance for the parking space, which I don't care. For me personally, I can't speak for everyone else, but, you know, sometimes I think that maybe there should be a little more greenery in the parking lot, maybe as a, you know, if, if that's required by, by code, I don't know why that would be something that we'd get relief from, if that's what you're telling me.
The, the main, the main thing was it wasn't existing nonconforming condition that was present on the property.
If you can close it to microphone.
Is, is to remain in this case, that's proposed.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of things in, in life that are nonconforming when it's built, but as we get older, there's a reason things change, you know? All right, so what, so I guess to make the motion to accept pending, what'd you say, Morgan?
Well, the first question is, does the board want to let the plan stay as is or reduce those seven spaces to something less?
Marty, could close your microphone to him.
And/or require aisles in that main parking lot? Those are two questions on the table.
I say, I say we keep it as is.
Keep it as is?
Yeah.
Okay, keep it as is.
I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah. That's why we're all here, to give our opinions, right? As long as our professionals don't have a problem with it.
So you're, are you just restriping that area or are milling and repaving in that area as well?
So this, this area is going to be full-depth pavement replacement where the darker hatches, that's just due to some creative changes that we're making. This entire area, we're not supposed to make any changes for, except for a restrip.
Okay.
A small portion of this.
Okay. And would it be particularly burdensome to?
Okay. And would it be particularly burdensome to eliminate those four spaces and make that a new island, or, I'm just kind of going off of what I'm hearing from the board.
I just see a big asphalt parking lot, and if we could put trees, if that's what's required. If it's not required, then forget about, you know.
But this is the one in the back of the school, right?
This is...
Talking about the front of the school, where anybody's going to really see it on a regular basis.
Yes, they're pre-existent, but you can...
All right, well, that's why I'm just...
Well, and my question is along the lines of, if they're already, you know, breaking up the pavement in that, the existing pavement in that area, what's a few more spaces? But that's ultimately your call.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm fine leaving it the way it is then. All right, so I guess...
Motion to approve with the conditions during the hearing. Motion to approve with the conditions that were outlined.
During the hearing.
During the hearing.
A second?
A second.
Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Ackerson?
Yes.
Mr. Mann? I'm sorry, step down. Mr. Emmam?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Silberman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Motion was approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
All right, so at this point...
Motion to close?
Yeah, I guess, you have a motion to close the meeting?
No reports from professionals, just from...
Motion.
Motion at second?
Motion.